It's now 6:02 and I'll call this regular board meeting to order. Item number two, establishment of a quorum. Let the record reflect that board members present are Adrian Gonzalez, David Fuentes, Andrew Gonzalez, and Isidoro Nieto. Item number three, opening prayer, Dr. Alejandro.
Yes, let me have Ms. Munoz assist us with this.
Okay, good evening. Tonight we have Ernesto Alcazar, a social worker at South Palm Gardens High School, delivering the invocation.
Please bow your head. Almighty Father, we thank you for always being with us and that your presence is with us now. Lord, we thank you for our superintendent of schools, Dr. Alejandro, our school board. We pray that you give them great inspiration and they share with us what you have placed in their hearts. We pray that you fill them with courage and give them your peace. We ask in the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Alcazar. Item number four, four pledge of allegiance and Texas pledge.
Okay, tonight we have two students from South Palm Gardens High School, Milagro Manganas and Sonia Galván, please come to the front. Directly to my left, I have Sonia Galván, she is the daughter of Javier and Veronica Galván. She is a recent graduate from South Palm Gardens High School. She is a proud, she's very proud of her school for offering her the opportunity to graduate on time. On her spare time, she loves to go dancing, being with friends, watching TV, and working. She is currently working at the Weslaco Public Library to get some money saved up. She plans to attend South Texas College this summer and begin her career in college. She is undecided in her major, but she does know she loves children and helping others. To her, to my far left, Milagros Manganas, she's the daughter of Jacenia and José Manganas. She is a senior at South Palm Gardens High School. She is a migrant student that has lived in Weslaco all her life. She enjoys being with her friends and reading books. Also, she works at Little Caesar's, FYI. Recently, a recruiter from Michigan State University visited with Milagros to inform her that she had been accepted to Michigan State and will be attending classes this fall. She plans to major in biology and pre-med and one day become a pediatrician pediatrician who specializes in the treatment of children with cancer. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am on the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Mindy, Mindy, could we recognize their parents?
If we can have Sonia's and Milagros' parents rise, so we can acknowledge them. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Item number five, awards and recognitions, Dr. Alejandro.
Yes, I'm gonna have Ms. Munoz assist us with this as well. We have a lot of awards and recognitions and we're very proud of all of our students.
We have champions as far as the eye can see. Okay, we're gonna call out our first group, the girls varsity basketball team, please come to the front. Tonight we want to congratulate the Weslaco High School varsity basketball teams. Both varsity programs have elevated the game and build a reputation of being the team to beat. Beginning with the Lady Panthers, the team finished first in District 316A for the fourth consecutive year. The Lady Panthers are also by district champions, area champions, and regional quarterfinal champions, making the trip to Sweet 16 once again. This is the third time in four years that Weslaco High School represents the Valley in the regional tournament. Our champions are Anika Arce, Gabriela Garza, Amber De Luna, Leah Solis, Victoria Mora, Jaslyn Muñiz, Brianna Peña, Alia Cantú, Emmy Rosales. Several Lady Panthers also received individual honors. All district honorable mention distinctions go to Ebony Nicholson, Eliana Rodríguez, Shayla Tamez, Andrea Villegas, Emily Science. She received, she received the District 316A co-newcomer of the year distinction. Gabriela Casades received the District 316A defensive player of the year. Amy received all district second team honors and made the District 316A all defensive And we also have Miranda Torres. Miranda received the Texas Girls Coaches Association Academic All-State Distinction. To receive this distinction, athletes must maintain a GPA of 90 or higher. Head coach is Griselda Fino with assistants David Medina, Cindy Smith, Susan Gonzalez, Victoria Pepachek, and Thomas Perez. All the proud parents, please stand to be recognized. Thank you, Lady Panthers.
Congratulations. Good job, Cortina. Happy ladies, great job.
Okay, our next group is the Panther varsity team.
Emily, congratulations on your newcomer of the year.
Okay, here are the District 316A champions. The Panthers have also continued the winning tradition at Weslaco High School. The Panthers finished with a 29-7 overall record and 11-1 in district play. The Panthers have won back-to-back district titles and by district titles, advancing to area this year. This brings the total number of district titles to six in the past 10 years and seven by district titles in the past 10 years. Our champions are John Zapata, Carlos Baez, Ben Martinez. Several players also received postseason honors. Receiving all district honorable mention are Derek Sedeno, A.J. González, Paul Avedano, Austin Lackey. Eric González received all districts second team honors. Okay, this next group was, were also nominated for all Valley and all region teams. Braxton received all district first team honors unanimously. Jordan was named the District 316A most valuable player defensive. Justice Free was named the 316A offensive most valuable player. Nick Mora was named 316A most valuable player. And we have Jason Morales, he received all district first team honors unanimously, and he also received the Texas Boys Coach Association Academic All-State distinction for maintaining a GPA of 90 or higher. Head coach is Gabe Valdez with assistants Yo Janies, Michael Janies, Trey Smith, José García, Nate Salazad, and Isaac Camacho. Okay, parents, please rise to be recognized. Thank you, boys.
Congratulations, guys.
Congrats, good job.
Hey, our next group is the Weslaco High School varsity swim team. Bring down the wrestlers. The team was the district dual runners-up and the district 166A champions after they dethroned the back-to-back champions of Juárez Lincoln. The boys also placed top eight in the Bitcoin Duel Championships in Houston and placed at the Dog Pound Classic, became back-to-back, to become back-to-back Thomas Garcés Duel Champions and finished with a 20 overall record. This year, we had the largest group of regional qualifiers in the program's history with a total of nine boys advancing and two alternates. Our regional champions/alternates are Chris García and Andrew Ogan. We have Noah Amaya, Caleb Muñiz, Dylan Viera, Emilio Reyna, Gabriel Cardona. The team was led by two individual district champions, one of which is here, David Anguiano. And head coach is Rolando Becerra with Mario Lasso. Oh, Christian García. Christian García, he's regional qualifier. For the girls wrestling team, who also did extremely well this season, two Lady Panthers won individual district championships in their weight class. Congratulations to Mariah Torres and Rulian Rodríguez. These two young ladies were also regional champions with Rulian becoming the first two-time regional champion in the history of Weslaco High School. Rulian went on to place fifth in state. Head coaches Rolando Becerra and Mario Lasso. Parents, please stand to be recognized. Thank you. Another round of applause as they exit.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Okay, the Weslaco East High School boys and girls wrestling programs also had two individual standouts this season. Two wrestlers advanced to state competition this year. Tonight, we want to congratulate Isaiah Quiorga. And Melina Gonzalez. They faced off the state competition earlier this season. Head coach is Jerry Trevino with Debbie Montgomery. Okay, parents, please rise to be recognized. Thank you, boys and girls. Our next group is the swim team. We also want to congratulate the Weslaco High School varsity boys team. The boys made waves this season capturing the 316A swimming district title. Our champions are Daniel Trevino, Brock Bloomquist. He was a regional qualifier in the 200-yard freestyle relay, 400 freestyle relay, and the 200 individual medley. Okay, Nicholas Cano. He was a regional qualifier in the 200-yard medley relay, 400-yard freestyle relay. Congratulations. He was a regional qualifier in the 200-yard freestyle relay and the 400 freestyle relay. Next, we have Zachary Buttermer. Zachary was a regional qualifier in the 200 medley relay, 200-yard freestyle relay. And we also want to congratulate Gilberto Reboyoso. He's a regional qualifier in the 200 medley relay, the 200 freestyle relay, and the 200 Okay, also Adolfo Pacheco, congratulations. And hold your applause, let me say all he won. Darryl Wells, regional qualifier in the 200 medley relay, 400 freestyle relay, establishing new school record in the 100-yard individual butterfly. Darryl also won all Valley honors with a 2, with a 100-yard butterfly. And he was also recognized, all-region honorable mention in the 100-yard backstroke. And Darryl received all-region first team in the 100-yard butterfly. Head coach is Alejandra Trevino. Parents, if you can stand to be recognized. Okay, the team was assisted by Josie Ramírez, congratulations. One more round of applause as they exit the floor. Okay, we're gonna shift gears and recognize our middle school athletic programs. First up is the B-Garza 7th and 8th grade baseball teams. Okay, both teams won the district championship titles during the inaugural 2016 season. The boys baseball white team champions are Daniel Alanis, Israel Delion, Joe Maldonado, Steven Navarro, Leon Gonzalez, Erin Gonzalez, Ted Cordova, Jared Perez, Andrew Reyes, Justin Calderón, Fernando Méndez, Noah Martinez, Elia Domínguez, and Roland Morales. I'm gonna, let me also congratulate Rodolfo Rodríguez. I want to invite the purple team to also join us on the floor. Congratulations to the B-Garza purple, purple team champions. The, the boys baseball purple team champions are Carlos Tamez, Michael Áviles, Ethan Alvarado, Matthew Lugo, Patrick Garza, Alejandro Hernández, Joy García, Carlos Juárez, Michael Cavazos, Elia Torres, David Fuentes, Elia Estévaniz, Evo Navarro, Troy Rodríguez. We want to congratulate the coaching staff, Eli Gonzalez, Omar Yanas, and Miguel García. Parents, please stand to be recognized. Okay, congratulations on your winning season and one more round of applause as they exit the floor.
Good job, guys, great job. Good job. Thank you. Great job. Great job, you're doing an amazing job.
Okay, we also want to congratulate our middle school basketball teams. Central Middle School and Beatriz G. Garza Middle School had very successful seasons. The Central Middle School 7th grade boys A-team are this season's district co-champions. A-team champions are Michael Alanis, Leroy Canales, Rodney Garza, Jesús López, Sergio Martínez, Matthew Mata, Ruben Mata, Nathan Parker, Aaron Fuente, Justin Rubio, Johnny Salinas, and Ethan Zamora. Head coach is Andrés Noriega III. Parents, please rise to be recognized. Okay, we're gonna invite the 7th grade boys basketball team to join us. This is the 7th grade boys basketball A-team from Beatriz G. Garza Middle School. They share the title with Central as co-champions. The boys finished with a season of 14-1 record and an 8, 8-1 in district play. They topped the season with two tournament championships. The 7th grade district co-champions are Joe Maldonado, Isaiah Ramos, Erin Tamez, Troy Rodríguez, Evo Navarro, Noah Martinez, David Trevino, Juan Galindo, Nathan Gift, Juan Valderas, Melitón Rodríguez, Michael Cavazos, Ted Cordova, and Rafael Garza. Head coach is Jorge Peña. Parents, please stand to be recognized as well. Okay, congratulations, student, one more round of applause as they exit the floor. Okay, we also want to congratulate the 8th grade basketball program at Beatriz G. Garza Middle School. Several teams brought the home district championship title. The B-Garza Middle School 8th grade boys B-team district, district champions are Rodriguez Zuniga, Tyler Dillard, Joey Garza, KJ Jones, Ethan Bolanos, Michael Áviles, Elia Estévaniz, Alex Hernández, Mark Abrigo, Julián Chapa, Celestino Ávila, and Ricky Rodríguez. Head coach is Robert De Anda. If we could also have parents, please stand to be recognized. Boys, stay up there, we're gonna have the 8th grade boys basketball A-team come to the front, please. Okay, the 8th grade boys basketball A-team also closed out the season with a district championship title. The team went undefeated with a 15-0 record, winning two tournaments as well. Our champions are Gabriel Gonzalez, Matthew Carrion, Eric Delgadillo, Adam Echavería, Aurelio Puente, Manuel Reyes, Adrian Gomez, Carlos Ledesma, Laú Figueroa. Raúl Figueroa. Hayden Knob. Rolando Verones. Marco García. And Davian Moreno. Head coach is Noel Jaramillo. Parents, please stand to be recognized. And one more round of applause as they exit the floor. Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job, guys. Congratulations. Congratulations.
We also want to recognize the B. Garza 8th grade Girls Basketball A-Team. These young ladies won the district championship. These young ladies also went undefeated in season, winning also two tournaments. Alexa Gallegos. Veronica García. Sabrina Cerda. Christian Padilla. Marisol Muñoz. Brandy García. Jennifer Perez. Tamara Pisina. Mallory Segura. And Bianca Cárdenas. Head coach is Noel Jaramillo. Parents, please stand to be recognized. If parents can stand to be recognized? One more round as they exit the floor. Thank you, ladies.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
We are now going to recognize our art students in recognition of Youth Art Month this month. Tonight, we are congratulating the Westlaco East High School Art 1 through 4 classes and AP Studio Art students for competing in digital design, ceramics, jewelry, sculpture, painting and drawing, and painting and drawing during the Visual Arts Scholastic Event. These students received regional gold medals. Together, both high schools won 94 regional medals. Also, several students qualified and advanced to state competition. In front of us, we have the Westlaco East Group, Rochelle Cardosa. Monica Gutiérrez. Mario Macías. Leslie Urbina. Samantha Rodríguez. Ricardo González. José Zamora. Angela Barbosa. Representing Maria Miller's class at Westlaco East, we have Karina Rodríguez. Aranza Espinosa. Yulissa Oggin. Priscilla Rodolfo. Priscilla also received a state medal. From Oracio Ramírez's class, Arlis Verónica López. Viviana Hernández. Tristan Scott Resendes. Andrea Rey Espinosa. And Elizabeth Martínez. Congratulations, students. Parents, if you can stand to be recognized? If you want to stay up there, we're going to have Westlaco High School art students, please come to the front. This next group are the art classes representing Westlaco High School. These students also received superior ratings and regional medals at the Visual Arts Scholastic Event. From Romeo Salinas's class, Mariah Castañeda. María de la Rosa. Guillermo Barroso. Ethan Nowlin. Enrique Ornelas. Leroy Lamas. Randy Loera. Guy Muñiz. Representing Diana Juárez's class, we have Larisa Horta. Stephanie Medellí. Allison Ochoa. Ilián de la Cruz. Eduardo Ramos. María Sepúlveda. Stacy Ortiz. Josana Horta. Lizeth Valladolid. Michael Sánchez. Elizabeth Bailey. And Anthony Garza. Anthony Garza also advanced to state competition. Congratulations. Parents, if you could stand to be recognized? And one more round of applause as they exit the floor. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Melo, congratulations.
Mr. President, I just wanted to mention that we have a lot of amazing students. As you can see, we had about 15 championships that have been recognized today. And we still have the science fair that is going to be coming in because they're still in competition that we'll be recognizing next month. That's why we call ourselves the District of Champions because we have a lot of amazing kids that continue to excel and bring those championships to our district. So I just want to recognize the students that we have and, of course, the parents.
Yes, very good. I mean, when we can recognize 40 minutes of student achievement, that's always a good thing. So congratulations to the coaches, to the parents, and to the athletes. Item number six, public comments. We have four people that have signed up for public comments. I'll be calling you each up here one at a time. First is Servando Javier Herrera. Hello, Mr. Herrera. For the record, if you would please state your address.
2016 West Mile 13 Northwestlaco, Texas.
Okay. You'll have five minutes to do your presentation. I need to read this really quickly. You are to address only matters that concern the school district. You are not to attack any board member, administrator, or the superintendent. You will be asked to cease from any attacks. If you do not abide, you will be asked to leave. I will give you... I don't have my secretary here, but we will start your five minutes as soon as you're ready, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Board President for victory in his campaign raise as Hidalgo County Commissioner. Congratulations. Good evening, public. You know, I'm a strong supporter of the Westlaco High School football program and always been there rooting them on and on. And after seeing the football schedule and some of the teams that we're going to play in this coming year, you know, I asked myself, how did we get this schedule? You know, are we prepared to competitively play state championship schools? The team we play is a 5A state football champions who literally destroyed their opponents in the state finals by a score of 56 to 0. So, you know, playing these schools kind of aroused my curiosity as to find out whether our high school football program was ready for this upgrading competition. So that caught my attention, and one thing led to another. And after asking around, most of my questions required for me to go to the public records, and that is going to take me a long time. So, you know, I've talked with the superintendent and a lot of concerns that I have and issues. I will be getting with him so that probably he could, you know, get them to you a lot quicker. But, you know, just briefly, one of the questions that I have is, why does the head football coach at Westlaco High School not have the same opportunities as the head football coach at East when it comes to hiring opportunities and compensations? Really, we've always said that Westlaco East, what happens at East happens in High. And let me just give you a quick example as to how it cripples the Westlaco High School. When, let's say, for example, Coach Brigitte has an issue with one of his coaches and is not really, you know, with the program. And he can... He has the authority because he is an athletic coordinator which consists of an administration position. So he can say, "Well, you know, I'm going to replace you and go and hire another coach" that he feels will be better. In Westlaco High, the head football coach, because he's not administrative, you know, contract, he has no authority. So if he's struggling with a coach, well, tough luck, you know. He has no... So how can he better his program if he has a weak coach and not be able to replace him as opposing the way Senate East? Head football coach over there can replace him at any given time. And, you know, that's one of my concerns. And obviously, you know, when it comes to stipends, how some coaches have up to four stipends, totaling up to about $25,000, you know. And some of these stipends, they don't have job descriptions. They don't have job duties. They don't have, you know, what are we paying this stipend for? What is he required to do? There's none. And I've got this out of public records, and I'm going to use this in comparison because, you know, it kind of aroused my curiosity now as to, well, are we the same? Is Westlaco East and Westlaco High doing the same thing when it comes to, you know, these kind of administrative decisions? Obviously not, there's concern. And the last time I was here, about four years ago, I kindly requested for a public workshop in reference to the scheduling that we had for our athletes. And I am here humbly again asking, you know, quite frankly begging for the school board and the superintendent to, you know, give me a chance to explain the scheduling. And I've done a lot of homework when it comes to the block scheduling. Five methods of having it and 100 ways to get it so that the community would feel comfortable and the students. So, you know, with that in mind, you know, I really hope that you take into consideration my plea to have this workshop. Because I've found some interesting things that I think maybe the board may not be aware of that I can open, you know, the light and then you can make a decision because last time, the public wasn't involved in it. And in one of the methods, it says the community should get involved. So, you know, like I said, I'm humbly requesting that opportunity if the board president and the school superintendent can, you know, get together and give me the opportunity. All right? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Herrera, thank you very much. Obviously, we'll ask the superintendent to follow up with you on that information that you have. And with respect to your other request on scheduling, you know, an appropriate time would be right after the school year ends, and we're planning for the next school year. So we'll talk about how we can be inclusive of having a public workshop at that time.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number... The second person is Jaime Peña. Is there Jaime Peña here to discuss the foreign exchange students? No Jaime Peña. Why don't you check real quick, and I'll call Edward Mejia?
Yes, sir.
Same thing, Edward. You're to address only matters that concern the school district, not to attack any board member, administrator, or superintendent. I will start your clock. You have five minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, members of the board, superintendent, Mr. Board President. I'm excited today because I finally executed my contract to use the building for my upcoming event on the 25th of June, which I have to give thanks to the superintendent and the members of the board for your support, your endless support and, how else could I say it, endless support and consideration as far as working with me with this is concerned. And I'm here to pass out my flyers that I just got created today, which I'm very excited about if you allow me to approach you all to pass them out. If it's okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
And to those of the community that aren't aware of this vision concept that I came up with, I just want to share a moment of my time that I have up here. Just to inform the public again, in case they have not seen this from last meeting that I was up here with public comments, is the concept that I'm going with this, like actually the vision that I'm going with this, is it's a musical competition, and it's open for the general public from the vicinity of rural Grand City all the way to Brownsville. And what it is, basically like I'm saying, it's a musical competition. And those that have been blessed with the God-given talent to sing, whether it's mariachi, if you play the guitar, sing country, regardless of what you've been blessed with, you're eligible to sign up. And I'm going to award a first, second, and third cash prize to each of the winners and a big trophy and showcase their pictures in different magazines and editorials in the 956. And after sitting down with the superintendent about two months ago and sharing it with him, he fell in love with the idea as well because he mentioned to me that there's a lot of talent here locally. So since I'm naturally born and here from this area, hopefully, we have dibs in people from here that will sign up and perform in the day of the event so that way, Westlaco will be noticed and known and showcased as the area where there is talent and it comes out for exposure or not. And the monies that I'm raising, and I've been on record on it, saying that all proceeds that are going from this are going to a major back-to-school supply rally two weeks prior to the start of the 2016-17 school year. So I'm looking forward to riding in a big school bus with the superintendent, hopefully, if he gives his approval, and going to the different hard-hit areas within the community to distribute backpacks full of school supplies with those that are less fortunate, that the parents can't send their kids to the first week, two weeks, to school with a full slate of supplies. And let me just say that I already posted my endorsement picture from the board from Ed Couch Elsa yesterday, and my lord, did I get a lot of positive feedback and people already want to sign up. So again, I want to thank you all for giving me the support that you have given me and for working with me, and I look forward to having each and every single one of y'all. me. And I look forward to having each and every single one of y'all at my event on the twenty-fifth of June because I will not leave you each alone. I'm gonna be on y'all until the day of the event. So, I look forward to seeing every one of y'all there on the twenty-fifth of June at Edward Mejia Presents La Voz del Valle two thousand sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Edward.
And good luck to you, Edward.
Thank you, sir. And congratulations to you as well.
Thank you. Did you find Jaime Penya?
Yeah, he's right here.
Jaime, okay, we...
You'll have five minutes, Mr. Penya.
Okay.
I don't know if you were here when we read the rules of public comments. You're to address only matters that concern the school district. You're not to attack any board member administrator or superintendent. You'll be asked to cease from any attacks. If you do not abide, you'll be asked to leave. I'm gonna give you five minutes, but before you start, will you please state your address?
My address?
Yes, sir.
Fifteen thirteen South.
Okay. You have five minutes, sir.
Okay. Today, I'm here to introduce Jacob Bottomman. He's actually a bear, but he's a very unique bear. We're hoping to get families here locally to support our foreign exchange students. Historically, there's not been too much going on with that, but this year and in the coming years, we'll have more opportunities for local families to host foreign exchange students. And the program I'm with is YFU, Youth for Understanding. So, we're looking at South Texas families to bring in children from about fifty to sixty countries. And he represents Germany.
You wanna introduce yourself?
Well, yeah, I'm Jacob Bottomman. I'm sixteen years old and I'm from Germany. And yeah, I came with this organization, YFU, from Germany to the US. And I'm staying here for one year. And I came in August and I leave in June. So, yeah.
What school are you at? What school are you attending?
Our PSJ Bears.
PSJ Bears, okay.
What did you like about the valley, Jacob?
Well, it's, everything is different to Germany. And first of all, the language, of course, and the weather, for example. I miss the snow. The snow, snow. And the food is all, everything is different. And I was very excited. So, yeah.
Awesome. So, if anybody was interested in hosting, my number is nine-five-six-five-six-zero-five-eight-seven-one.
Jacob, you wanna take that over to them?
This is the program. Pardos, can you place that?
I'm the South Texas representative. I cover a hundred and twenty miles of the area. And we have great kids that wanna be part of the heart of the valley. All for your heart and your home. And we're in the heart of the valley. So, I'm hoping this, people are gonna be interested. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck to you. We need, we don't have a quorum, so we need just a minute.
Can you stop giving Andrew water? So, I take it you guys are ready for spring break? No more water for you, Andrew.
Okay, we'll continue now. We also have Mr. Joe Miller. Joe, are you here? You've heard the spiel?
Yes, I have.
If you could, for the record.
My name is Joe Miller. I'm the product here of Westlaco Schools. And I'm here to speak to you this, this evening regarding remarks about the upcoming bond election for a hundred and nine million dollars.
Excuse me. Just before you start, real quick, before I start your five minutes, just state your address for the record.
My address is twenty-three-ten Spice Wood Drive here in Westlaco, Texas.
Thank you, sir. You have five minutes.
I also wanna thank you for serving on the board. I know it's a, you know, it's a, it can be a hard job and the time that you put. And I know it's not a paid position. So, I do wanna thank you for the service that you've given to the community. The first thing I wanna talk about is communication. You know, many of us had just finished paying our taxes for the prior year, for the twenty-fifteen year. You know, you're writing that check and like, wow, I'm glad we had enough to pay the taxes that are due for twenty-fifteen. So, and I'm thinking as, as most people, when you're paying taxes, like, man, what could I have done with some of this money? You know, maybe I could repair my leaky roof, which I should've done before yesterday, right? But anyway, so be it. You pay your taxes, then maybe a month later, out of the blue, no warning, boom, social media, Westlaco School District wants a hundred and nine million dollars. And guess what? It's gonna increase your taxes. So, I did notice during this most recent political campaign that many candidates are very experts on communicating through social media. Every day, post, vote for me, vote for, don't vote for the other person, vote for me, hourly post. I would ask respectfully, the next time you're asked to vote for a motion that is going to possibly increase our taxes and ask for us to get money from your constituents' pocketbook, can you please do that on social media before so that maybe we could come and, and express our remarks to you prior to making your decision? That's one thing I would ask. The other thing is the economy. Can anyone here honestly say during the last four or five years, we've had an excellent economy? That the economy is growing? That wages are increasing? That people's disposable income is growing? I don't think anybody can honestly say that. The last time that the economy was really growing, you have to go back to like two thousand five, two thousand six, two thousand seven. And then what happened in two thousand eight? The Great Recession. Boom, the economy stops. It's not growing anymore. Wages decline. People lose their jobs. People may have to get another job and they were making so much, now they're making a lot less. People that have, were able to keep their jobs, especially in the private sector, many people have not been getting pay raises. So, if you were to say somebody, are you better off now in twenty sixteen financially than you were in twenty oh five, twenty, twenty oh six, twenty oh seven? The answer's gonna be no, we are not. Many of us have had, you know, to stop contributing to our 401K plans. Nobody's contributing to their retirement accounts. So, if you were to say back in twenty oh five, this was our disposable income, twenty oh six, when the economy was growing, then in twenty oh eight, it stopped. Our disposable income was shrunk. Then we have an issue with the city where they need an emergency water plant. So, taxes are now gonna be increased via higher water rates. You have less disposable income. Now, guess what? STC needs more money to fund their operations, less disposable income. Now, guess what? The appraisal district, the last couple of years have significantly been increasing our property values. So, that's an automatic increase for city, county, school taxes. Boom. Now, here we are with our disposable income. We're at this level. And now here comes the school district. Guess what? We need a hundred and nine million dollars and you're gonna have to pay for it. So, that's the, 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 the environment that we face ourselves in. And there's just not a lot of appetite right now for, for tax increases. And if you're in an elected office, that should be the first thing on your mind. Wait a minute, this is gonna impact my constituents. They're already hurting. You know, the average median income for the state of Texas, family income is fifty-four, fifty-five thousand dollars a year. In Hidalgo County, does anybody know what the median family income is? Thirty-four thousand dollars. Okay? We're hurting. People are hurting. People said, oh, it's only gonna increase your taxes by a little bit. Like when you go to a restaurant and pay a hundred and twenty dollars for a family of four, there's a lot of people that cannot do that. They cannot afford to do that. So, you know, that was one point I wanna make as far as the bond issue is concerned. You know, we do an excellent job here in Westlaco, guys. We're providing everything our kids need. You drive around, brand-new football stadium, beautiful aquatic center, almost brand-new performing arts center. We have a Kates Center that one of my kids took advantage of. You know, we have, we have the corral, is it the FFA Corral? We have computers technology. We have several, in the recent past, several new schools, schools were remodeled.
Give you thirty seconds to finish.
Okay. Dedicated teachers, you know, great teachers. The bond is going to be paid back in what, thirty years? Are we gonna have to be paying this, this increased taxes for over a thirty-year period? You know, who's gonna pay for the utilities and the operating costs once these buildings are built? Have we budgeted for that? Have we looked at the budget? Once these new schools are built, these new buildings, are we gonna have money to pay for that? I understand that Roosevelt might have an issue, maybe a health and safety, environmental health. If anything, we should focus on that instead of building all these buildings to grow the district. The perception is we're doing it to retain students from leaving us, to go to magnet schools. And the issue is, that I have as a taxpayer, is we are funding those magnet schools. So, it shouldn't, if that's what you're doing, find another way, please. Find another way. Finally, I understand if you're a body, you probably operate under the rules of Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order states that you can change your mind. After you made a vote, if you wanna change your mind, you can, you can do it. I'm asking one of you, maybe not this meeting or another meeting, to consider offering a motion to rescind the bond election. You can offer a motion to rescind the bond election and with a two-thirds vote, the election can be canceled. I wish I had more time. I have a lot more information to provide you. Thank you, guys. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leder.
Okay, item number seven, superintendent's report, student enrollment, ADA counts, and insurance.
Yes, Mr. President. As you can see, our enrollment has been pretty consistent from what our enrollment was last year. We are at forty-four more students this year than we were last year. What has helped out a lot for us is, of course, the fact that now we have included our Twenty First Century Elf Academy. That has increased our enrollment by three hundred. So, the total, grand total increasing of our enrollment has been three hundred and forty-four students. So, again, that, this has been done to try to get, to address student needs as early as possible. I know that down in the, in the Real Grand Valley, we have a lot of kids that, we have eighty-six percent economically disadvantaged. So, we have a lot of students that are in great needs. Kids are required to hear twenty-one thousand words a day in order to be successful. Thirty million words by the time they reach public school. So, we wanna start working with our children in our community as early as possible. So, that's why we developed this partnership with the Twenty First Century Elf Academy so that we can begin to target that way, the students or the children in our community. That way, when they come to us in public school, they will be public school-ready on day one. As you can see, we're, one of our areas that we have concern is in the middle schools. If you remember last year, the concern was in the elementary schools. That's where we had the greatest decrease in enrollment. And now it's in the middle schools. But that's because those, that decrease in enrollment that we had in the elementaries are now, those are the students that now we would've had in the middle schools. Where we have seen some growth is in our high schools. Our growth has increased by, up to a hundred and two. So, again, the grand total that we have, that our enrollment has increased is three hundred and forty-four. In terms of our self-funded health insurance program, healthcare continues to increase and it is becoming much more difficult to provide the very best care for our employees. I have been mentioning to the board now for a couple of years that we need to be aware of these changes because, you know, eventually we're gonna reach a point where we're not gonna be able to provide the same kind of benefits that we have offered in the past without increasing the amount that we allocate to our health plan. As you can see, we have the claims this year. We have up to now, at the end of February, we have had five million fifty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars spent compared to last year. At the same time, three million six hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and thirty-five. That's an increase of approximately one-point-four million that we've spent more this year. In terms of our prescriptions, we have spent one million five hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-nine this year compared to last year, one million three hundred and eighty-seven four hundred and thirty. That's an increase of approximately two hundred thousand dollars. In our fixed costs, we have spent this year one million four hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirteen compared to last year, one million three hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-two. That's an increase of approximately a hundred thousand. So, the total increase in costs has been one million six hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and nine. So, this is why I, again, want to just make the board aware that if this trend continues in healthcare, and there's a lot of things that we need to take into consideration, of course, the increase in, in the valley for whatever reason, we're not very sure, there's a higher incidence of cancer, diabetes, and heart disease. So, these, of course, have, have plagued the whole area. So, these are the kind of things that we are challenged with. So, this is one of the main reasons that our healthcare has increased. But I just wanna make sure that the, that the board is aware that we're gonna eventually reach a point where we're gonna need to allocate more money for the healthcare or begin to take a look at the kind of benefits that we provide our employees. In terms of our...
On the claims here, Mike, the one-point-three-seven-six increase, is that a utilization or is that a diagnosis increase?
Both.
Both?
Utilization issues. We have more people that are, because of the exclusive provider network, we have more people that are actually seeing a doctor, which is good. And we've had, had some major diagnosis or claims issues that we're dealing with.
But on the, on the new network that we created, wouldn't the, the copay, I mean, not the copay, but our reimburse, our, our portion of the expense, isn't that a lot lower than a normal negotiated rates?
It, it's a little bit lower. Not, not a lot, but it's, what we're running is, with our last, there's, there's, it's really hard to compare it because with our last TPA, they were very, not very transparent, not willing to share, you know, what kind of, you know, how we, basically get a chance to look at their contracts, okay? So, now that we're comparing our direct contracts with the current network, the RAP network we have, IMS, and as far as physicians' visits, our, our rates are very, very good.
We're, we're on track to exceed last year's total by three million dollars?
More or less.
Can our budget handle that?
We're gonna, like, as Dr. LaHondola mentioned, we're gonna have to look at additional funding for the plan. We haven't had a, an increase in our funding levels in the past, this, after this year will be six years. So, we're able to hand, head it off for a while, but the claims are catching up with, with what we're funding.
Will our reserves be able to handle it?
For the rest of this year, I, I'm optimistically, or cautiously saying gonna say yes, but...
And at what level do you think you're gonna continue to fund, like, to maintain a reserve balance?
We're looking at about, right now, we fund three-eighty per employee. We're looking anywhere from four-hundred to four-twenty-five per employee for next year.
To keep the same type of benefits?
To keep, correct.
So, is that something that's coming up for this year?
There, there will be an agenda item to either go out for proposals or renew with the current TPA.
When would that come?
Next month or in May.
I, I do wanna commend the board though because, you know, we do provide the very best healthcare or health benefits to our employees anywhere in the valley.
That's correct.
Okay, so, so, and again, I wanna thank the board for always making sure that we do the, that we do that. And as you mentioned, Mr. President, we want to continue to do that. That's why, you know, I have been trying to make sure that we keep this in mind so that we could do everything possible to continue to offer that. So, I wanna thank the board for always being very proactive and very staff-centered and student-centered as we make sure that, we want our teachers to be healthy so that they can continue to be in front of our students and continue to experience the success that you saw earlier in our meeting. Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. President, there are similar districts across the valley. In fact, everybody's almost in the same boat as far as with the increased health costs.
The problem... The problem that I see, though, is, one, we're gonna lose about three million dollars off the fund balance if we trend like this, right? Or what are we gonna be, exceed our budget by?
Um...
Without any stop-loss, without any of that?
It's, 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 it's hard, it's hard to forecast without doing some more actuarial work. Uh, I know we have a workshop scheduled next week. I can, I can have that data for you, uh, without shooting from the hip now. But estimating anywhere from half a million to a million, to a million dollars.
But, and then that's gonna carry forward into, the next budget's gonna have to be upped by one point five million dollars?
More or less, yes, sir.
Just to try to break even if we experience the same utilization and...
Mm-hmm. That's why, that's why I'm estimating at, at four hundred to four twenty-five, depending on, on, uh...
That's a two and a half, three million dollar...
Mm-hmm.
Number.
More or less, yes, sir.
We need to start planning on what we're gonna do, whether it's modifying the benefits, increasing deductibles, you know, whatever you have to do to modify that plan to make it fit our budget. I'm not sure that we have more monies that are gonna be coming in the door.
We have some, uh, recommendations that we'll make, uh, during the workshop. Uh, we met with the committee, like I said, last month, and we presented some of the things that, that we're looking at as far as bringing, you know, our, our plan in line with everybody else's, so we'll present those at the workshop.
Okay. Andrew, you're ahead of that, right?
Yes, I am. And, uh, Mike did, uh, inform me last week that, uh, in his next committee meeting, uh, we will be discussing it.
So we're gonna talk about a, well, we're gonna post a special meeting to discuss this specific issue?
Well, the workshop is for...
Workshop on the same day as a special meeting, right?
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay. Correct. Okay. Any other questions related to the health insurance? Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
The next, uh, portion of my, my report is on the workers' compensation program, and, uh, today we have Mr. Dyer that, um, is going to be presenting that portion of, uh, of my report.
Before you start, let me just, for the record, note that at seven oh eight, Oscar Caballero joined the meeting. Thank you.
Mr. President, Superintendent, uh, again, my name's Jimmy Dyer. I'm Director for TriStar Insurance Group. We are your third-party administrator for your workers' compensation program. Today, the presentation, I'm gonna try to give you a broad overview of the past five years in your self-funded plan, including frequency, where your dollars are going, paid and, and reserved. The first, uh, this slide here is giving you a snapshot as of the end of last month, February twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, uh, from two thousand eleven to the present policy year, and the policy year is consistent with your fiscal year, a nine-one, eight-thirty-one timeframe. Uh, in two thousand eleven, twelve, had a little over, uh, seven hundred and fifteen thousand in losses, uh, a vast majority, and I guess I probably should explain what the indemnity medical-only claims are. Indemnity claims are a classification that we give to a particular claim that is filed that results in an employee losing time from work, uh, a permanent impairment, something of a serious nature, and/or a questionable claim that may require a dispute filed on behalf of the district. Uh, so that gives you, the red line is really where your biggest dollars are going, or on indemnity claims, that's by far your biggest cost generator of, of losses. Two thousand twelve and thirteen, we had a, kind of a spike year of nine hundred and fifteen thousand, but since that time, we've seen a, a steady, uh, decline in both, uh, the, the number of indemnity claims as well as the losses paid out on those, those claims. Uh, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-two last year, which was, uh, one of our better years in the past, uh, past, uh, five years, and as of this current financial or policy year is a hundred, just shy of a hundred and eighty thousand, which six months into the program, we're having a, a pretty good, pretty good year thus far. I don't wanna brag about anything, but, uh, uh, but anyway, so far, so good this year. Again, the new types of claims, uh, the blue, uh, is a medical only, which is really, they just go to the, have file a claim, go maybe to the doctor once or twice. Again, the indemnity claims, which you can see in two thousand twelve and thirteen, we had sixty claims, which kinda drove that, that high loss year. But since that time, it's kinda steadied off around forty-five to roughly anywhere from seventy, eighty, uh, medical-only claims a year. This year so far, we've only had fifteen indemnity claims. That's kinda why it's resulting in a, in a good, uh, year so far as far as cost or concern. So where are your dollars going? This particular shot, slide shows all the payments we're making for all policy years in, in, in a policy year, if you will. The red being medical, and that's where a vast majority of your costs are going. Roughly about sixty-five, seventy cents on every dollar we spend in workers' comp is gonna go towards, uh, providing medical benefits to an injured employee. So far, again, this year, we seem to have bent some of the cost curve so far. Last year, we had roughly, uh, almost eight hundred thousand in paid claims. Through six months this year, we're almost, uh, uh, around three hundred thousand, so the cost curve seems to be set. So the last slide that I have here is kinda giving you an average cost per claim that you can see. Um, over the last three years, we've really been working hard with the risk management department, and I think we've seen a, a, an overall average cost per claim, again, from two thousand thirteen, fourteen was roughly thirteen thousand. We're down to roughly twelve, little over, uh, twelve thousand last year, and so far this year, we're averaging about eighty-five hundred dollars a claim. And that's, that's including what we've paid so far, but what we're also projecting, uh, kinda giving a, um, we call it a reserve. In other words, what we anticipate that claim to cost you going forward. That's kind of a dynamic number, and it can increase, but it can also go down. But that's kinda where we're at with the, uh, workers' comp self-funded plan.
In your second to last slide, you talk, you have, um, expense indemnity and medical, the, the three-tier bar graph?
Yes, sir.
This one?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I got it. On the expense, the green portion, what exactly is... What, what is that a part?
Okay. Um, the, the green part would be, uh, would get into where we have, uh, some legal cost would be to defend a claim, uh, if we're, uh, incur those costs, but it could be, um, also some, uh, other expenses that are associated with it. I guess the primary one would be in, in the legal arena, you know, for cost, pay for attorney's fees or filings to, to, to defend any disputes that we may have.
So, so in this particular year, the two twenty-five isn't, is just because we haven't had much litigation?
That is correct.
Okay. And then on your last slide, in your experience and your experiences throughout other districts, what is the average, normal cost per claim?
The average, average cost per claim, and I think statewide is most of the data I can give you, and, and I do other districts in the areas, probably in the indemnity is around, around twelve thousand in that neighborhood, twelve to fifteen thousand.
And what would you attribute to the variance here? Why we, four thousand dollars less? Why that's a good variance? I mean, is it because of, you know, a lot of our programs that we put in place?
Well, I, I mean, Mike can speak. I think we, the thing we initiated that I think is, back in September of this year, was having your own medical panel, where employees, kind of your own network that we created, that your employees are participating in to help us control, have a better control of the cost of the program.
And the reason I ask is because if, if we can manage that and keep our claims a lot lower, then obviously that's a tremendous savings for us, but is that what your experience is, Mike?
It's a, a combination of the five oh four that we, uh, that the board approved back in September. Uh, we also have a safety specialist on staff at risk management, uh, that kind of keeps everybody on their toes, so I'd attribute it to those two factors. So we're, we're halfway through the year, so we're trending that, uh, we're gonna come in under budget.
Okay. All right. Mr. Dyer, was there anything else, sir?
No, I'm fine.
Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Dyer on the workers' comp or Mike? Anyone? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it for your report, Doc?
Yes, that's my report.
Okay. We'll move on to item number eight, which is the consent agenda from my left. Adrian, you have anything?
No, sir.
Oscar?
No, sir.
I don't have anything. Andrew?
No.
Mr. Nieto?
No.
Doc, did you have something to modify?
Yes, I, I wanted, um, uh, pull item number thirteen. Um, we had a...
Do we need to pull it so that it's taken off of the agenda or...
Yes, so that there's no, so that there's no action on it.
Okay, so is there some wording that needs to take place other than just pull it to, to deal with individually?
Yeah, if, if somebody's gonna make a motion to approve the consent agenda, they, they do so excluding number thirteen, item thirteen.
All right. I will now entertain a motion with respect to the consent agenda with exclusion of number thirteen.
So move. I'll go ahead and make the motion to exclude, uh, to accept the consent agenda, uh, without item thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez, a second by Mr. Nieto. Any further discussion? I'd like to thank Mr. Caballero for his generous donation to the Westcoes softball team. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, section nine, discussion items, number fourteen, interim financial report for the month of February twenty sixteen. I didn't need to go back to thirteen on the consent agenda?
Right, the superintendent pulled it 'cause I'm, I guess...
Because it's a non-action item, is that, do we need to address it, is what I'm asking?
Right. My understanding is that there's gonna be a change on the date there, the, the new proposed date, so item fourteen requires, or item thirteen requires no action.
Okay. And you're okay with it?
I'm fine.
All right. So item fourteen, interim financial report for the month of February twenty sixteen. Dr. LaHondro?
Yes, Mr. President, um, I wanna, I, I'm very glad to report that we're doing real well in terms of our collection of revenues. We're at sixty-one point sixty-three percent. Most of these, uh, revenues are coming in from our local sources, where we've collected eighty-seven point thirty percent. Our state sources, we've collected fifty-seven point seventy-six percent, and our federal sources, fifty-two point seventy percent. In terms of our expended and encumbered amounts, we have a total of forty-eight point two-four percent. We are halfway through the year, the fiscal year, so we're, our expenditures and our encumbered amounts are right in line, so we're approximately at fifty percent. So, um, I'm glad to report that we're doing real well in terms of our collection of revenues. This is an information item, so there's no action required.
Anybody have any questions related to this item?
No, sir.
If not, then we'll move on to item number fifteen, acknowledgment of Idalbert County Tax Office Collection Report for January twenty sixteen, current taxes and delinquent taxes. Doctor?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Um, last month, we were not able to present this information. This is the January two thousand sixteen, um, report. Uh, we did not receive this information in time for the February ninth board meeting, so we received it until February the eighteenth. So, uh, I wanna bring it, uh, for the board, just for information. We did real well that month. A lot of people were paying their taxes at the end of January, so, uh, we had collected eighty point sixteen percent of, uh, the taxes for this, uh, fiscal year compared to last year at the same time, where we collected seventy-seven point seven-three percent. So that was a two point four-three percent increase. In terms of our delinquent taxes, we collected twelve point eight-nine percent compared to last year, eleven point eight-seven percent, so we were one point oh-two percent higher. So for the month of January, we did real well in terms of our, uh, tax collections. Uh, this is information item, so there's no action required.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the January collection report? If not, item sixteen, acknowledgment of Idalbert County Tax Office Collection Report for February twenty sixteen, current taxes and delinquent taxes.
Yeah, yes, Mr. President. We just got this, uh, a couple of days ago, so, uh, we've, uh, we were glad that we can report on it. Uh, as you can see, on the, the, our tax collections, we're still doing real well. We've collected eighty-six point three-three percent this current year compared to last year. At the same time, we collected eighty-six point one-eight percent. So our increase has decreased a little bit, but we're still higher than we were last year at point one-five percent. In terms of the delinquent taxes, uh, we've collected fifteen point six-eight percent compared to last year. At the same time, fifteen point oh-nine percent, so we are point five-nine percent higher. So we're still doing well in terms of our collections. Uh, again, this is a information item, so no action is required.
Does anybody have any questions on item sixteen? I think it's great that we're collecting at a higher rate than last year, so it's good. We're on track, Andres, to hit all our collection numbers related to the budget?
Yes.
All right. Uh, section ten, discussion and possible action items, number seventeen, discussion and approval of revisions to policy DNA local performance appraisal evaluation of teachers. Dr. LaHondro?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Um, two years ago, um, the state of Texas, uh, was going to change the teacher evaluation system, so, uh, they were asking for districts to pilot this new evaluation system, which, uh, Westaco immediately, uh, took the opportunity because we saw that there, there was gonna be a change, so we wanted to make sure that we were on the ground level of this. So there were two districts in region one, Westaco being one of them, that, uh, went ahead and, and, uh, volunteered for this pilot. After the first year and the assessment that took place by the state, they realized that they needed more information based on the feedback that they, uh, received from all of the pilot districts, so they extended the pilot for a second year and invited other districts to, um, participate. So they had an increase in the number of districts that also participated. But now it seems like they're gonna implement the new evaluation instrument for the coming year, so since it's gonna be the new evaluation instrument, it, we need to go ahead and mod, and revise our policy DNA local, which talks, which is, addresses the performance appraisal evaluation of teachers to be able to, um, uh, be, uh, meet these requirements of the new evaluation instrument. So I'm recommending that the board approve the revision to policy DNA local performance appraisal evaluation of teachers, um, for the new T-test, uh, evaluation system.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez, a second by Andrew Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
Uh, Dr. LaHondro, does, uh, this instrument follow the same as Padas, where they can ask for a second appraiser, uh, if they don't agree with, uh, evaluation?
Yes.
He does?
Yes. Uh, the, the other thing about this instrument is that this is a, um, this is an instrument that, um, continues to measure growth, and it's a lot, uh, it's a lot more teacher-friendly and principal, well, teacher-friendly in this particular case, uh, in terms of being able to, uh, allow the staffer to be able to grow and to identify those areas. So it's not the cut-and-dry type, uh, instrument that the Padas was.
So administrators and teachers have, uh, utilized this for two years?
We, we're in a second, we're in our second year of a pilot.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item eighteen, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the memorandum of understanding between WISD and South Texas College for the continuation of the Westaco T-STEM Academy for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year. Dr. LaHondro?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. If you recall, last year, uh, the board approved us, uh, applying for a, an early college high school, and at the same time, we had an opportunity to apply for a T-STEM Academy, and we were approved for both, thanks to the board and, um, and allowing us to move forward with this. Um, the T-STEM Academy is designed to provide students with an opportunity to do, um, yeah, be able to take courses where they can receive an associate's degree in the STEM field, science, technology, engineering, and math. So we're very excited about this because it offers a lot of opportunities for our students. The only thing is that, um, that the, the state requires that we reapply every year for, uh, to maintain this, um, designation as a, as a T-STEM Academy. So, um, I'm recommending that the board approve the continuation of our T-STEM Academy, which is part of our Westaco Early College High School. And if approved, this will be the second year of operation for the T-STEM Academy.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nieto to approve as recommended by administration, with a second by Andrew Gonzalez. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item nineteen, discussion and possible action on a right of redemption property currently struck off to Westaco ISD. Off to Wesaco ISD. Dr. Alejandro.
Yes, Mr. President, this item was requested by the attorneys for the firm of Purdue Brandon Feadler, Condon, and Moak, and they're here to do a presentation to the board.
Good evening. My name is Thelma Bandu. I'm one of the attorneys with the Purdue Brandon McCallan office. What this is, is I think you all know that tax sales is one of the few times where somebody who loses property through a foreclosure process can actually get it back. This taxpayer exercised her right to redeem the property within the statutory requirements of the tax code, and for the sake of transparency, we write it before the board, it's not really discretionary. If she meets all the requirements, she's entitled to get her property back. Since it was struck off to the school district, we asked the district, who is the acting as trustee, to execute a redemption deed, which we've already shared with your general counsel.
Ivan, you've reviewed the document. Everything seems appropriate?
Yes.
I just, she has already tendered the money, it's, she's even actually paid all the way through tax year 2015.
Okay. So, this is just a formality, Ivan?
Yeah, it's an absolute right that the person has to redeem the property.
I'll now entertain a motion, then.
So, we're good?
Yes.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez, second by Andrew Gonzalez, to approve as recommended. All those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Thelma.
Thank you.
Section 11, Closed Meeting to Discuss, Number 20, Personnel Matters, Texas Government Code 55.074, A, Employment of Personnel and New Hires, B, Resignation, C, Deliberation Regarding the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment, Duties, Discipline, or Dismissal or Proposed Termination of a District Employee. Item number 21, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding, A, Pending or Contemplated Litigation, B, Settlement Offer, or C, A Matter in Which the Duty of the Attorneys of the Wesaco ISD Under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas Clearly Conflicts with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code 55.071. Number one.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask that the board not discuss or take any action after the closed session or even discuss during the closed session, item number one.
Okay. Do we need to take any motion on that? We're just going to...
No, just to...
So, we're just going to strike that from the closed meeting?
Right, exactly.
So, the only item under consultation with legal counsel will be item number two, Discussion and Consideration Regarding Cause Number C-0346-15-I, Ann M. Howley versus Wesaco ISD, and cause number C-8418-14-I, Ann M. Howley versus Texas Education Agency and Wesaco ISD, in the 398th Judicial District Court of Hidalgo County, Texas. It is now 7:34, and we, this meeting is now in closed meeting. It is 8:16, and we have now returned to open meeting. Let the record reflect that at 7:40, Adrian Gonzalez left the meeting. Section 12, Reconvene in Open Meeting, Number 22, Possible Action if Necessary on Items Number 20A through 20C, discussed in closed meeting. So, Personnel Matters, A, Employment of Personnel and New Hires. Dr. Alejandro.
Yes, Mr. President, you have the list before you, and I'm recommending approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Nieto, a second by Andrew Gonzalez. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Letter B, Resignations. Dr. Alejandro.
Yes, Mr. President, you have the list before you, and I'm recommending approval.
Including the addendum, correct?
Including the addendum. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Andrew Gonzalez, second by Isidoro Nieto. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Letter C, Deliberation Regarding the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment, Duties, Discipline, or Dismissal or Proposed Termination of a District Employee is a, there are none, so it's...
Non-action.
It's a non-action item. Item number 23, because this was pulled from the agenda on item 21, number one, there is no action on this.
That's correct, Mr. President.
There's no action on this one as well. So, item number 24, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding Cause Number C-0346-15-I, Ann M. Howley versus Wesaco ISD, and cause number C-8418-14-I, Ann M. Howley versus Texas Education Agency and Wesaco ISD, in the 398th Judicial District Court of Hidalgo County, Texas.
Mr. President, we talked to the board about the parameters of a settlement agreement, and we're asking that the board approve that tonight.
I'll move to approve and discuss in an executive session.
Second.
Motion by Oscar Caballero, a second by Andrew Gonzalez. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Section 13, Adjournment.
So moved.
It is now 8:19, and this meeting is now adjourned.
Second.